Good evening, everyone. We're going to open the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission for the Town of Trumbull. For May 6th, 2025. I will ask our clerk to do a roll call if she would.
Richard Gerard?
Present.
John Loria. Carmine DeFeo.
Present.
Richard Deacon.
Present.
David Verespi.
Yo.
Greg Cernica.
Present.
Robert Farigno.
Present.
Town staff Tatiana Solovey.
Here.
John Mayer.
Here.
Attorney Jim Cordon.
Here.
Thank you.
Word of the evening was yo. You missed it, Mr. Cordon.
Sorry.
At any rate, I'm going to ask our attorney to give us the legal aspect of doing a Zoom meeting, if you would, sir.
My pleasure. Has been the practice of this commission. We are conducting the meeting by video conference and teleconference over the Internet and the telephone. During the public comment period, which there is a public hearing tonight, you may be recognized to speak by electronically raising your hand or dialing star nine. Those instructions will be given again at that time. The agenda for tonight's meeting was posted on the Trumbull Town website 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Materials for the applications were also posted on the town website in advance of the meeting. Please note that posting any comments on any online format or any chat will not be included in the record and the commission will not see those comments. I would ask all commissioners and participants to remember to please identify yourself before speaking for the benefit of those who may be only listening by telephone. Lastly, I would ask the chairman to make sure votes are conducted by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. And finally, tonight's meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, counselor. All right, we're going to open new business, application 25-13, Joseph Giuliano, to permit approval for restoration plan and pool within a regulated area at 17 Applegate Lane.
Through the chair.
Do you see anybody, Tatiana?
No.
Give him a moment, otherwise we'll let you give an overview of it.
Perhaps we could rearrange the order of the application.
All right, give him some time then.
Yeah, I'll show them an email really quick.
All right, in the interim then, we're going to go to application 25-14, Trevor Dodds and Stephanie Erquidi. To permit approval to extend fenced-in area backyard, squaring off fencing, removing 540 square feet of wetlands. Additional plantings to create 2,250 square feet within a regulated area at 622 Booth Hill Road. Modification of application 25-05. It is my understanding, by the way, on that 2,250 square feet, that's actually going to be wetlands, so. All right, do we have anybody from 622 Booth Hill?
Yes, let me promote them to panelist.
Evening, everyone.
Evening, Mr. Dodds. If you can give us your name and your address.
Yeah, Trevor Dodds. I'm here with Stephanie Erquidi on 622 Booth Hill Road.
All right, if you can just give us a overview of this is a modification of what was approved previously, so.
That's right, yeah. So this is a modification of the permit of the approved last meeting. Since then, we're hoping to basically just enlarge the enclosed area of the backyard to make it a bit more usable. As we were going through the planting plan, we discussed the potential of doing that. And speaking with Tatiana, she suggested that we come back to the committee to discuss since we'll be removing about 540 square feet of wetlands and and creating four times that amount. So happy to walk you all through the plan and pull up the map if that's helpful.
All right.
Let me share that so we can all look at it. All right. Let me zoom in here. Okay, so the initial permit that was approved, you can kind of see, you know, the fence was tightly enclosing the pool area. Here, the revised proposal is extending extending the fence to the perimeter of the backyard. This is right at the edge of the lawn, right before the wooded area starts. And enclosing the full backyard, coming back through, you know, the property line connecting with the back of the house here. The green area is existing wetlands. So this would be in our new proposed enclosed backyard. So we'd remove these as wetlands and we would create the additional 2,400 and change in these red enclosed areas. So this red in the top left is current yard that we could convert. And then you can see on the right-hand side of the property, we can add, you know, 500 square foot two separate 500-plus square foot increments here and then, you know, some smaller ones in sort of the northeast corner. Happy to go into more detail if needed. This is also doubling as the planting plan, so we can field questions on that. But I think really the intent of tonight was to discuss the potential of the enlarged fenced-in area.
All right, Tatiana, did you have any comments?
No, it's really just a wetlands proposal, so it appears they're filling some and adding some plus wetlands. I'm sorry, plus plantings. I think what hasn't been mentioned is that the pool construction is rather time-sensitive. While it was approved, there were some questions on the planting, so I think it would be very helpful for the applicants to figure out what plantings the commission desires so that they can proceed with the pool while this is reviewed. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, and this would be the proposed planting plan under that, under this decision. Yeah, agreed.
All right, in this case, then I'm going to ask David or Bob to take a look and give us your thoughts.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
I'm just seeing this, so I'm just, it's a cursory glance here. You know, generally soils are, wetlands areas are defined by their soil types. And simply by adding plantings to an area doesn't necessarily make them wetlands. I would like to speak to the professional who prepared the planting plan and is looking at this. And are we looking at regrading these areas to bring, to create them as wetland soils over time or whatnot? The other thought I have, and Jim Cordon could certainly chime in on this, is whether the commission would be interested in something that said, okay, where the back fence line is, from there to the back property line, you know, can we get a conservation easement over that area that says, you know, it can't be developed in the future, which would protect it from further development? The front areas I'm not so concerned about, but in the back, that might be something that would be worth protecting because that's where the tier three vernal pool is. And it would allow those areas to sort of develop over time. But I'll look at the planting more in depth.
All right, so you'll be studying that while I go to the rest of the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, is the plantings in the wetlands and is that soil going to be continually wet? What's the status of that soil throughout the entire year?
The proposed plantings are not in current wetlands. So the light, white area here are not wetlands. We propose adding the plantings as a buffer and then regrading, you know, to the point earlier, regrading the areas in red to convert to wetlands, is my understanding.
Let me ask Bob and David a question. Would rain gardens be more useful?
I don't know if a rain garden.
You can't just change the soil, so.
Right, you can't just change the soil in these areas where they're adding the plantings and regrading it to to make them into wetlands areas. The plantings are certainly a good addition. You know, these areas of plantings that they're just adding could easily be, you know, removed at some later point in time. The thought of setting aside that back area is an area that is reserved, I think, might have more value in the long term. But that's for the commission to certainly entertain and discuss. You know, on the stream side of the proposed pool area, you know, a rain garden over there as opposed to doing the infiltrators could work, but you know, Tatiana has also chimed in on her concerns about the rain gardens on an ongoing basis. Which, you know, I certainly hear and understand.
What are your thoughts, Tatiana?
So in this particular case, we have completed the engineering review, so it would not be very fair to kind of redesign the stormwater system, and this particular proposal is for the wetlands. I'm not sure how in-depth was that proposal in creation of that 2,000-plus square feet. Perhaps they could provide a detail, but I think rain garden is a separate conversation, so I would not want to complicate this one in this particular case.
Any other comments from the commission? I see, I see. Rich Deacon, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. There's a couple of notes. I'm looking at the GIS map, which obviously GIS maps have severe limitations, but it shows, unfortunately, it shows the entire property, nearly the entire property is underwater, which obviously it's not. But what it does not show is a delineated line of the wetland like we see in the proposal. Now, my concern would be, are we unduly burdening the neighbor who right now is outside of the 100-foot setback in certain parts of their property? And now by no fault of their own, will suddenly become within the 100-foot setback of a wetland? They bought a property, they're, you know, minding their own business, and suddenly they become under our purview. Now, if they already are because the GIS map is somewhat unclear as to the status of 626, if they already are, then it's kind of a moot point, but I'd be curious to know if we have any idea of where that wetland is in regards to that property, because I have no intention of stopping a good application, but we shouldn't overburden a random neighbor who didn't intend to suddenly own wetland property.
Very good catch, Rich. Attorney Cordon. Would we be then putting a burden on the neighbor? If this were to be allowed?
Well, wetlands is defined, as Commissioner Verespi pointed out, by soil type, so you know, the intent to square off the property here and to mitigate it by creating other areas which may turn into wetlands, you know, sort of a to-be-determined process. The regulated activity is not based on property ownership, it's based on the distance from the wetlands. And so, you know, that's always dependent upon a soil scientist coming out and determining where the wetlands are unless they're indicated on our officially approved wetlands map. I mean, I don't know that, I guess we'd have to ask Tatiana if there are already wetlands in the area if this would matter.
Yep, through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
So the proposed wetlands. Oh, where is the North Arrow here? But anyhow, on the right-hand side, they're closer to the house, so they would not impact the buffer to the neighboring property. And then closer to the vernal pool, they are a little bit closer, but it's really not substantial. In my opinion, there are already a lot of wetlands behind all these properties and a 100-foot setback would not make any drastic change with creation of these wetlands. However, if the commission is not comfortable with that back wetland behind the stormwater system on the screen on the left-hand side, you know, perhaps that could be omitted so that no neighbors are impacted.
That seems like a reasonable conclusion.
This is David Verespi. You know, like Tatiana said, these properties all have wetlands behind them. Coming in 10 or 15 feet isn't going to create an additional level of, you know, review on these properties that doesn't already exist. I mean, the properties are probably mostly already all encumbered with a setback to begin with.
Okay, that's satisfactory then. Thank you.
Anyone else from the commission?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Just continuing a little bit on what Rich Deacon brought up, most of that area they're talking about in the back there is in the floodplain also. So. Look, I agree with Tatiana. I don't think it's going to make much difference. One thing I cannot tell on the drawing we were given is it's marked about the 100-foot setback line, which is below what you're currently showing, but I can't follow the line. Like, I don't see it.
I can try to pull up. This might be because this is a planting plan. Let me pull up the site plan that may have a more clear delineation.
I would think the entire property here is encumbered with a 100-foot setback between the right and the left.
I agree, but on the drawing 2.61, which we were given in our packet, it indicates in the lower left, the 100-foot review line, but I can't tell what that line is. It seems to match up with the 260 elevation, but.
No, there's a dash dot line there. If, who's got this on their screen, on the screen?
I do.
Can you scroll it down? So if you look in the neighbor's house here, this line all the way to the left in the neighbor's house. Right, right there, that is the wetland line. So if you follow that down across your driveway into the front yard, there's, it takes a 90 degrees and heads towards Booth Hill Road. So right, yep, exactly. That's 100-foot review line.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to scale though to the 21-inch equals 20 feet.
Well, that's something you should ask the.
I mean, Commissioner DeFeo, Attorney Cordon here, I don't know that's material at this point. You already have an approved application, so this is looking to modify the plan.
The other question I've got has to do with the application. You, on the line 19, area to be deposited and excavated, you're showing 525 feet, square feet to be excavated, which appears to be that wetlands that you want to fill, but the deposit of 4,100 square feet, that's almost twice the amount of area. Can you explain where that 4,100 square feet is that you're depositing?
Yeah, those numbers are from the initial permit as we note below, so the 4,100 square feet is from the pool and the patio. That'll be used to level out the lawn on the left.
That came out in the previous meeting, Carmine.
So you're depositing the soil that you're removing for the pool and spreading it out on the lawn?
Yep, that's right.
Okay. I remember there's a root system and stuff there too, right, that you wanted to kind of.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah.
In that area that you're planning to fill, the Xs are indicating the trees that were removed?
Yeah.
Yes.
And in the previous application, we said the stumps were to remain.
Yes.
Will they still be remaining?
Yes.
So all the stumps
are there.
Will remain. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else from the commission? I'm sorry, you couldn't hear.
This is David.
David, go ahead.
So I'm looking at the planting plan that was prepared. In the planting group that is right by the pool equipment note and the 49-foot indication, there appears to be a tree, but it is not labeled or indicated. So you've got 3CL and 5VA, but there's not a tree indicated there. It would either be a CC or a CF. So that needs to get addressed and labeled correctly. And then in the large planted area to the back left in the 900 square feet, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 trees shown, and you've got, I don't know if you've got all of those, 1, 2, 3, 4. You've got four trees there indicated, but there are five shown. So they need to do, adjust, they need to review their planting counts and make sure everything's square and correct.
So are you talking about this area here?
No, the one to the complete left. The 900, you've got five trees shown there, and there's 1CC, 2BH and 1CF, so there's four trees there. And then on the other side, you've got 1 CC and 1CF, which doesn't correspond to the plant labels shown or the symbol shown. And then the next bed down, it's got one plant, but it just, they need to just review and make sure that everything's labeled correctly. And Attorney Cordon, what are your thoughts on the idea of creating a conservation easement from the fence back?
All right, well, that's up to whether the applicant will consent to that. I've not walked the property, as you know, I'm not familiar with it. If it's, if it's a part of their property that they're going to be actively using and doing, you know, landscaping in or things of that nature, then a conservation easement would not be appropriate. If it is likely to remain in its natural state, then a conservation easement perhaps would not be too much of a burden and it would, you know, they can cut things back every couple, you know, a couple of times a year if there's tall grass or things like that, but other than that, the intent is to keep.
Maintain it for invasives, et cetera.
Correct. So I'm not familiar with the prop, the site. There is a fence there, Commissioner, also, so it's not likely to be, you know, there is a barrier for it.
Right.
But again, I'm not familiar with the property.
Mr. Dodds, is there, what is your plan where you've got this no-mow zone? Is there a plan to use that in the future as like an active area or is that you're just sort of writing it off and saying, you know, it's beyond the fence, we're not planning on using it?
Yeah, that area is open. It's like, it's wooded but open, so I'd say we'd like to use it in a passive way. So from that standpoint, wouldn't be interested in an easement. The stuff to the left is all wooded and overgrown. But, but yeah, I think that no-mow zone, we'd like to keep usable.
Okay. It's just a fair, it's a question.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments, questions from the commission? All right, Tatiana, did you hear from the other applicant?
No, not yet. I don't see them on the list either, so.
All right, well then, Mr. Dodd and Ms. Quidi will. I'm not sure, but the commission might want to walk this again, but we'll, you know, we'll notify you if that's the case. In the meantime, you've got your pool permit, so you can move ahead on that. All right?
Yeah, I was going to clarify on that. Are we good there, Tatiana, with the pool?
Yeah, you've been approved on that, so.
Great, so we'll keep working. I just want to make sure that the construction of the pool wouldn't be held up, so, but, sounds great.
All right, take care. Attorney Cordon.
Yes.
Am I okay if I just have Tatiana give an overview of the 25-13 application for Mr. Giuliano? I don't want to just table it.
Do you want to close out, Mr. Chairman, before we go to that one? This application, 25-14, either you could vote on it tonight or, and then.
Well, no, we'll be walking it just to view it again, so.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's.
We're walking the one we just heard?
Yeah, don't you think, just to see if we, you know. We'll talk about it in the work session. It's just something that, you know, I want to kind of get a feel of what they're doing, exactly where the things are, so. All right, so.
Well, to answer your question, you can proceed with old business. And then we could always come back to new business, application 25-13 folks come on. If they don't, then Tatiana can just give an overview and you can accept the application and schedule a walk.
All right. Tatiana, do you feel comfortable enough to do an overview in the?
I'm happy to give a bit of a history and just to walk the commission through the plans submitted, but I think the applicant should be presenting their proposal. But I agree with Jim, maybe we can proceed and see if they come in at the end of the meeting.
All right, so in that case, we're going to close new business for now. I need a motion.
Motion.
Okay, and seconded by?
Deacon.
Bye, Mr. Deacon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. All right, we're now going to go to old business, application 25-08, Giacobi Construction LLC. Permit approval for partial clearing, construction of a single-family dwelling with associated site improvements, including drainage and utility lines within a regulated area at Marshall Avenue Lots 80 and 81. You see Mr. Giacobi in the group there?
Yes, I'm promoting Attorney Deacon.
Thank you.
Somehow it's not. Oh, never know.
Attorney Rizzio, are you speaking for application 25-08?
Yes, that would be me. I hold on a second. Trying to get the video. I'm trying to, I don't know what happened. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I guess you can see me now, too.
Yes.
All right, when I went to tie in as panelist, I got knocked out, so I'm assuming some of the commissioners are tired of hearing from me already, but we're off and running. Yes, I'm here representing Giacobi Construction with the property at 24, Marshall Avenue. This is a property that was originally two lots. Our client has combined the two lots to create a, basically a modest home on these lots. It'll be about 2,000 square foot of living space plus a garage. The property has an intermittent water course along what we'll call, if you look, if Tatiana can post the post the site plan or even the actual, the buffer restoration plan might even be better. post the site plan or the, even the, the actual, um, the buffer restoration plan might even be better, um, that was submitted.
John, could you pull it up? Do you have it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. So this, if you can see this now, that's the site plan. Um, no, that was the next application. No. Site plan. There's a, there is a, a, um, water course buffer restoration plan submitted by Alex, uh, Alexandra Mock.
One second.
I think it was part of the original submission. That's why it's not attached to this agenda. But yes, we do have it on the record. It just may take a minute.
They're looking for it. You can see there's an intermittent water course up, up the right-hand side of the property. Um, let's call it the, um, see if the survey calls out the, um, and what our client is, would like to do is first of all, he's got some retaining walls that may, that are proposed. And then what he will do is, I'm waiting for the restoration plan to come up, is put a, a line of plantings along both sides of the intermittent water course that would, uh, protect the intermittent water course along with the retaining walls. And, um, there'll be no filling of any wetlands, no touching of the wetlands. And then also clean out any invasive species that are running along the edge of this, this, this water course. Um.
Sorry.
Soon as it comes up, it might make more sense.
It was submitted with last month?
Nope, see it in last month's agenda, but.
Easier if I emailed it to Tatiana?
John, did you look in the application folder?
Yeah, I've.
I would go there. That's where everything is.
Oh, yeah, I was looking at that.
Let me just email it to Tatiana if that helps, if that's any help.
If you go back to the April agenda, it's on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Presby.
I am not seeing it. Sorry.
There you go.
There we go. So as you can see, this is this intermittent water course along the side of the property. Our client is going to protect that with this, if we go down to the bottom of the, you'll see the list of all the plantings that are occurred. Um, we're flexible with regard to any recommendations the commission may have with regard to a size or species. And we think this will provide a natural buffer from the, um, intermittent water course, which is really, uh, never been maintained or anything really been, uh, uh, touched it. So, um, that's basically where we stand. The house is a modest home. What happens, there were two lots there, which our, our client is consolidating. They were under two separate ownerships. And rather than try and somehow squeeze two homes in there, he's, uh, he's consolidated the lots and provided this planting plan to protect the, this intermittent water course. That's basically it. We're not touching the wetlands. We're not, we're not going to fill any wetlands. And since we're within the buffer area, uh, we are before you tonight.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Um, do you have any, uh, comments, um, Tatiana on this? Like, we talked, it looks pretty cut and dry.
Uh, the engineering department, we're still going back and forth on the.
So, John, okay, John Mayer's going to address it. Thank you, John.
Um, we're still going back and forth on the drainage plans. Um, it's mostly minor changes, but, um, the only one that really pertains to wetlands is that, um, we're expecting a revision for the pudding drains for the house where instead of um, dumping on the catch basin along the road, they dump directly into the stream.
All right. So you'd be amenable that if we pass it with the, uh, condition that they would have to satisfy, you know, that condition, you'd be?
Yeah, it's one of our, our engineering comments, so.
All right.
No, no issue with that from the applicant.
All right. Commissioners, any comments, any questions?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, David.
I have reviewed the planting plan prepared by Alexandra Mock and I find it to be quite robust and I, I agree with it.
All right. Any other comments, questions? If not, I would, uh.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Um, along the right side of that water course, the residence to the right seems to be encroaching down to the actual water course. Is there, has there been any conversation with that owner as far as what will be done? Cause I envision complaints when they start saying the plantings are going on their property.
No, well, we have, we have the ability, all, all the plantings are entitled, entirely within our property line. And we would have the right to trim right up to the property line, but there's no, there's nothing in the plan that we envisioned crossing over the property line to, uh.
No, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying. I feel the, at the, uh, residence to the right feels the wa- water course is the property line and they have grasped all the way down to it, where the wetlands are. And you extend well to the right of that water course.
So are you concerned about? Are you concerned about adverse possession claim there?
Yes.
Well, that's not enough.
I'm just asking if, you know, has the property been surveyed with stakes so that the, the residents can see that they have been encroaching?
Hundred percent. The, the property's been, has been, has been surveyed. The, the wetlands have been flagged. Um, so there's, there's no, I don't, I don't think there's any issue there. If they want to try and make a adverse possession claim, that's, that's the right, but we are the legal title of property owners to that property. I can't speak to, uh, the behavior of an off-site, uh, neighbor, but they certainly don't have any rights um, to anything within our property line.
No, I, I agree. I'm just, I just don't want to have this turn into, you know, police being called because of, uh, a neighbor.
Well, can I tell you?
Conversation beforehand. They eliminate everything.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. If anything, what we're doing is if they grasp that property right up to the stream, we're actually, we're actually rest- restoring a, an area that might have been, uh, compromised, you know, without approval of this commission, so.
Right. No, I, I fully agree. I, I, I like what you're doing. I'm just trying to make sure that there aren't going to be any problems with neighbors.
No problem.
Okay. If there are, we will send you out, Carmine. You know, all right. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Uh, through the chair really quick. Um, I think when the commission walked it, the stream appeared to be extremely clogged, uh, with the leaf debris likely from the neighboring property. And I was wondering if the applicant would be amenable to cleaning that up a little bit as it would benefit their, um, property.
Hundred percent, Tatiana. Please make that a condition of approval.
Thank you.
All right. If there be no other comments, Greg, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve as submitted.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty-five oh eight. Permit approval for partial clearing, construction of a single-family dwelling with associated site improvements, including drainage and utility lines within a regulated area, Marshall Avenue Lots eighty and eighty-one with two conditions. Well, um, with, uh, um, based on approval of section one point one to one point one oh and specific conditions, two point one, uh, applicant, um, needs final approval with engineering for, um, a final footing drain discharge location and two point two, um, applicant, uh, needs to clean up the, um, leaf debris in that water course during construction.
Okay. Have we, uh, missed anything, uh, John or Tatiana? We're good? All right. I need a, uh, second on the, uh, motion.
I'll second it.
Well, I saw Richard's, uh, with the piece, so he's seconding it. All in favor? It's unanimous with the six of us, so we're good on it. All right. Thank you, uh, Attorney Rizzio. All right. We're going to, uh, close old business. I need a motion to do so.
Don't move. Don't move.
Okay. And who's going to second it?
I'll second this one.
Okay. All in favor? Very good. All right. We're going to go back to, uh, new business, application twenty-five dash thirteen. Um, I'm assuming that, uh, Mr. Giuliano hasn't come back on. So what I would ask is if, uh, Tatiana can give us an overview so we can accept it. Uh, this is a violation, so, um, and it has a problem with the conservation. So she can give us an overview because this will be something that we would walk. So if you would, on application twenty-five dash thirteen, seventeen Apple Gate Lane. It's all yours.
Yeah, um, so the property owner, um, stopped by the engineering department prior to purchasing this house. Um, and, and the engineering staff explained to them that there is a wetland area in the back as well as the conservation easement. Um, let me just show the screen really quick. Here. There we go. Um, so they were well-informed about the, um, conservation wetlands areas. Uh, they went ahead and purchased the property. Um, and then they, uh, have filled the wetlands, uh, saying that there, there was just eroding. And I believe there was a fence construction also. So their backyard was expanded onto the wetlands and conservation easement. Um, and now they are coming in with also a proposal to build a pool. And as you can see, the conservation easement line, um, is crossing the fence. I'm not actually sure, uh, what that is. Probably the applicant would be better, but they're grading within the easement and partially building their pool. Um, the new wetland flags, um, uh, there is a discrepancy between that and what was originally a wetland line, which aligns with the conservation easement. So not sure if they were filled or what happened, but there is a big discrepancy. Um, and that's a summary, a very high overview of that application.
As I understand, that was in, uh, December of last year when they first came in, right?
Uh, when they originally first, that was in early two thousand, two, twenty twenty-one, maybe twenty-two, I forgot. Um, but they stopped by again regarding the pool inquiry in the fall of twenty-four. And that's where it all came about that they have actually approached in the conservation easement. So.
Okay, so. So this was, do you know who previously flagged this? What, wetland scientists? Because now it's being redone or was redone by, uh, Denzer Associates?
So that was originally part of a subdivision. I do not know who flagged it, but, um, we, we have to research that. That's in very old files.
Through the chair.
Um, go ahead, Rich.
In the old days, in preface this with, in the old days, we used to have.
Don't be looking at me when you say that.
Well, we used to have a concept called a motion to receive. And we would only receive complete applications. And we would only receive applications and the applicant was there. And this seems to be, you know, I don't know if it's going to reach the level of a significant impact activity, but it certainly is significant in the traditional sense of the word. And the applicant isn't here. Uh, Tatiana's told us that there are significant issues with this property and the application and the quality of the application and the map. And, um, we really can't move forward. Um, so I, I would see if the commission would entertain a, uh, motion to deny without prejudice.
What are your thoughts, Attorney Cordon? Cause the reason I wanted to get it on so that we could at least walk it and see what's happening because um, nothing's going to happen with that pool till we determine, uh, what the issue is with the um, prior delineation of the wetlands versus what, um, um, Denzer Associates has come up with because right now, as it looks, it's they're cutting right in where the, uh, the, uh, pool deck is. So I mean, that's a, you know, quite a discrepancy, so.
Um, through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
Regardless of what the wetland limits line currently, the conservation easement is on the recorded map. So perhaps the commission would, it would be more beneficial for everyone if the review went forward and, um, the commission kind of gave, um, a direction to the applicant as to what they would like, whether any disturbances could be allowed within the conservation easement, whether, um, previous work, whether it has to be restored. Uh, I don't know. I think Steve Denzner also prepared a restoration or remediation plan. Uh, yeah, there are some plantings. Obviously that's not engineering. Not sure if that's acceptable. Um, but I think deny, this was an, a violation. And the applicant has worked with the staff and they have also came in with a pool proposal. Um, but I think to address the violation, it would be beneficial for everyone if the application stayed current and rather remediation was, um, reviewed and eventually voted on. Just my.
Uh, uh, quick question, Tatiana. Is the, um, conservation easement marked in any way? Are there any stakes, any markers, stones, anything?
I do not believe so.
Cause I didn't get a chance to read the, uh, actual easement that was attached to see how they, uh, delineated this.
Originally, this was just a wetland line and obviously was kind of left in a natural state and eventually the lawn, um, areas moved in there, um, and then more and more encroachment and more work occurred. Um, it, as it could be seen on the aerials.
All right. Um, I'm trying to see when this was, uh, was done. This is in eighty-nine. And, um, we, and this wasn't, uh, required to be marked by a fence or anything. I don't, I have to read this a little bit better, but I agree. I think we shouldn't. I agree, I think we shouldn't move forward on it and will give us a chance to get out and walk. And also ask that the applicant be able to uh get this state as far as where the uh easement is. Um, and I think I saw it, Rich, yeah, I saw your hand up, go ahead, Rich.
Okay, so thank you. On the left side of the map, it says conservation easement line and wetland limit line right there. Now, if you go a little to the low and to the right, you see that hundred foot upland review area, so. What I'm confused on is how can a hundred foot review area from a line other than the wetland limit? Are there two wetland limits?
Yes, because originally the conservation easement line aligned with the wetland line and. After whatever happened, um intentionally or not. The wetland line now according to Steve Denzor's flagging in twenty twenty four is all the way back there. So that is the discrepancy. The yellow one is the original wetland line.
Okay, I I understand, now then, thanks.
No problem.
I guess the question is then, if there's a conservation easement line, what are the, I don't, I don't remember ever. Proving or even seeing someone attempting to build in a conservation easement. Is that something we can just overlook as a condition of appro, uh even even just as a commission, say, okay, yeah, you can build in there? Cause I would question, why bother having a conservation commission at all if they're gonna create easement lines that. People just come in and ask for approval to build in the easement, there's no remediation, there's no mitigation, there's not even an acknowledgement, it's just the. A proposal to build over the line with no mention of the line, and since the applicant's not here, we can't ask him, so. Um, I I would love somebody to attempt to explain. Why that's even allowed? And if it is allowed, why there's no mitigation?
Well, we're not saying it's allowed, that's why it's a violation. Uh, the other thing I would ask John or Tatiana to do, uh, you said this was a subdivision, uh. Go back and find out who originally flagged this, uh, who, what soil scientist?
Uh, to the chair.
Uh, go ahead.
It was done by Spaff Bjorklund, uh nineteen eighty eight.
Well, I had showed, I had showed favoritism, but he's got a long, long uh. Line of work and he's been pretty reliable, so again, and his company got bought by uh Jason Edwards, so. We'd still have access to their uh. Records, so that's something I would ask John or Tatiana to uh get a hold of them and. Let's uh see what their original stuff was, and then if there's some way of marking that so we can see where. The conservation uh line is because. Well, it doesn't make sense to me, cause I I was on, John was on back then, that. Normally, we would have asked for a fence, and I don't want to take the time to read through the easement now, I'll do it after the meeting, but. We would have somehow marked that, either stones or or uh stakes or usually. We used to do a split rail fence.
But, but Mr. Chairman, even without it, this is not just the the violation, they're proposing new work inside the conservation easement. So what what's the procedure for that? Is it?
No, I'm not, I'm not agreeing to it or disagreeing, what I'm saying is, how was it that? This has been allowed that now the grass is just growing in there and they're just using it like regular part of the yard, if it's an easement. As Attorney Cardone said earlier, you're supposed to have the right to go in uh twice a year, trim trees, do whatever. If it's an easement has been granted, you don't have a regular everyday use of it.
But, right, but they shouldn't even be allowed, i- if, I guess the question that is unanswered is. There's clearly an easement line there and regardless of the violation, they're proposing new work inside the easement line. And they clearly see it, it's not like it's some lost deed, it's right there on the map. So I guess the question is, are they allowed to inside a conservation easement line, regardless of the violation, they're proposing new work in it?
Mister, Mister Chairman, if I, if I may?
Go ahead, Attorney Cardone.
Sure, so um maybe we could take down the map, please.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I think we've got a couple of questions here, uh. I'll take, I'll take the second one first, so the conservation easement is granted to the town. And the inland wetlands agency, so we have the right to modify it or revoke it, so. I think they're coming to basically ask for that, and that's within your purview to make a modification to that if you wanted to. Um, this first question was, you know, should we deny the application tonight? I don't think we should deny it, I don't know if the applicant is aware, I assume they're aware that they should have been present, but perhaps something came up in there. Um, that caused them not to be able to be here, we have sixty five days within which, from tonight, within which to uh make a decision. Uh, unless we have a public hearing in which we have even further time. So we could just have a motion to continue and they could come back next month and then you could schedule your walk and we could, you know, proceed then, um. That, that's an option as well.
Go ahead, David.
Through the chair, I have uh multiple questions. Um, first off, Tatiana, do we know if this is a current topo map or is this the topo map from the original subdivision?
That's a great question because we have actually asked for um.
Cause I would like to see comparison between the original subdivision map, the nineteen eighty eight contours. And what's out there today, um, to see what the difference is, cause it appears that they've filled several thousand square feet of wetlands. To create these lawn areas. Um, I would deem this a significant activity and push this to a public hearing because even in their proposed plan. Their, all of their remediation planting and their contours are within wetlands areas. Um, and they've appeared to have filled a large area of wetlands, um, which would. You know, require, would be, you know, certainly grounds for a significant activity. Um, the conservation easement, do we have, can we institute fines for work within the conservation easement? Or what is our recourse there in terms of punitive damages? Um, I know they're saying, oh, we'll put in all this planting in, in the wetland area as remediation. But, you know, they filled that area and now they have lawn in the conservation easement area, what is our? What is our, you know, recourse here?
Normally, my feelings would be they'd have to bring it back into the previous state.
Right, which would mean removal of thousands of yards of fill.
Well, again, they were made aware, but it's not a situation where they came in and they got blindsided. They uh, you know, they were very well aware of this, but again, we'll look into it. Um, I definitely would like you to um, uh, John, if you can. Uh, get a hold of Jason Edwards, I don't know if um. They should have all of David's uh records and stuff and see if we can get the background on this. Cause uh. And I'd like to also see if there's some way of delineating where that conservation line is. It's like I said, it's just, I wish John were here tonight because. We always, always marked anytime we did a conservation, usually a split rail fence or something to denote it. So I'd like to see that, and on the original approval. See if maybe the rail, uh, you know, rail fence was taken down or whatever, so. If you can look into that, I'd appreciate it. Uh, other comments, questions? All right, so um. I think we will continue this till um. Next month, but in the meantime, I would like to get the records, I also would like to uh. Uh, notify the applicant that we would be uh walking this, if he can somehow get this. Delineated as to where it's at. And um. Perhaps um, maybe Jason Edwards would be kind enough to go out and kind of guide us, but. All right, so.
What are your thoughts about pushing this to a public hearing?
No, I agree with you, that's, um, thank you for bringing that back up, uh, yeah, it is a definitely significant impact. So that first thing we'll do on that is you want to make a uh a motion to do that and then we'll vote on it.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to bring the application on Applegate Lane, I don't know the number.
Application twenty five dash thirteen.
Mister Chairman.
Twenty five dash thirteen for a public hearing due to significant impact.
Mister Chairman, if I.
Attorney Cardone, you had a question.
Usually, I'm not opposed to it being a public hearing at all, but. We usually have this first meeting and then you usually vote at the next meeting to do that, and my only reason to do that is if you schedule a public hearing for next month. There may be a lot of pieces to this application that are still incomplete, and so we would be starting the public hearing perhaps at a disadvantage. Both for the commission and the applicant, seeing that they're not present tonight. Maybe we take this month to see if we can communicate with them, schedule a walk. And then as you normally do, you would normally schedule a public hearing the following. At your next meeting, which would put you, put them into a hearing and what, and what that would be July, I don't know, Tatiana, you can weigh in on this if you feel differently.
I thought, we talked to the commission, I think if you feel strongly about public hearing, um. It, it could save the applicant a little bit of time if.
It certainly could, yes.
Opens it next month, but either way, um.
Well, that's fine, that, yeah, I I just bring it to your attention, that, that's a good point, I mean, it, if you, if you perceive the public hearing next month and it's not ready, then you. Just continue the hearing, so that's fine too, um, I, I have no problem.
Sixty five days comes up to our summer break, which could be troublesome.
True.
We have.
For no. Yeah, should we hear more information, please, before we go to public hearing? Should we walk it, should we get more information from the applicant before we decide in a public hearing, it seems like we're in the dark to so, so to speak.
Oh, except the only issue, Bob, is that with all the filling and everything, and David pretty much outlined it, it is. Pretty much, uh, you know.
Okay, okay.
Parks off all the uh necessary things for a significant uh impact, so.
I understand.
Mister Chairman, I apologize to Mister Varespi for interrupting your motion, so.
No, no, you, no. We, we value your, your uh input, believe me.
All right, so. Make a motion to schedule application twenty five dash thirteen for a public hearing due to significant. Impact at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning or the um inland and wetlands water courses agency.
Okay, I need a second, seconded by Carmine, all in favor? Okay, now all six of us are uh in favor of it. All right, so um, application twenty five dash thirteen will be continued until uh. Our next meeting, which is June thirteenth.
We need a.
Through the chair. Yes, all right, hold on one second, I'm looking through there, all right, so. Do we have anything else that?
Through the chair.
Is our next meeting June thirteenth, is that right?
Yeah. Um. Just to make sure that doesn't fall through the cracks, staff will notify him that it needs to be a public, that it will be a public hearing. And he needs to notify the proper uh property owners.
Yes, the, we sent, Colleen will send a letter.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Sorry, Tatiana, I gotta cut you off.
Uh, just wanted to clarify that the next scheduled meeting is June third.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Isn't that what I said, I thought I said June third.
You said the thirteenth.
No, June third, that's my wife's birthday, I wouldn't have said thirteen, if I did, I have a speech impediment, boy, you, you guys are hard on the old guy here. Can I, can I file suit uh Mister Cardone, you know, fairly? All right, so are we good on this?
Age discrimination.
Go ahead, Rich.
Okay, so again, back to my original point, I, I voted with Dave to be nice, um, but. I was the one who brought up the motion to reject, motion to deny in the beginning. What recourse do we really have? We're telling them, we're kind of kicking the can, we're saying, okay, we're gonna have a public hearing. But what if they don't show up again, or what if they, you know?
Then we deny it without prejudice and um move on.
But at that point, there's a denial for work that's already been completed, and as you've always said, we try not to be punitive. But what other recourse do we have other than heavy fines, no one wants to find the guy, we want it to be fixed.
We haven't said that, firstly, we're operating in the blind, we haven't seen it, we don't know. That's why I've asked for the background of what uh the subdivision was with Bjorklund's work. Find out what the uh, you know, previous wetland markers look like. So, you know, we'll do our little investigation, we get out there, we can kind of look and see, cause right now. You know, I can't envision what they've done, they were saying something about. The uh slope was sliding in all of this, well, you know, I like to get out and look at it, and again, we are not. Automatically saying, okay, gee, this is fine, we're gonna let you do this. Cause normally, I don't remember so far in my time. And John's only on a little longer than me, that we've ever um. Redid a uh, you know, the uh outlines of a conservation, not saying it can't be done, but. So far, we've never done it and we've never allowed it, although we didn't have one. Commission, one application real early on where somebody bought the house and there was a tennis court and a swimming pool in the. Conservation, that was like early on, that was back early eighties, so. It happens, so. All right, so uh motion to close new business. Um, made by uh Mister Deacon, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Carmine, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, we're unanimous, that's good. All right, we are now gonna go to our public hearing and I'm going to ask Greg to read the notice. For the public hearing, if you would, sir.
Yes, uh. Notice is given that the inland wetlands and water courses commission of the town of Trumbull is holding a public hearing on Tuesday, May sixth at seven P M. Be the video conference. Uh, or uh participation by telephone. Um, application twenty five oh nine Amelia for. For free permit approval to legalize existing improvement of retaining wall location. Topographic contour changes and underground infiltration system within a regulated area at four Sycamore Street. It's a modification of application twenty one oh six. Application twenty five ten Amelia for free permit approval to legalize existing improvements for retaining wall location. Topographic contour changes proposed underground infiltration system location. Um, and new rear deck within a regulated area at six Sycamore Street, modification of application twenty one oh seven. Application twenty five eleven Amelia Ferrer, permit approval to legalize proposed retaining wall location. Locate scour hole location and encroachment of limit of disturbance within a regulated area at lot three two one Sycamore Street. A copy of the applications and maps are on file to town engineer's office and on the town of Trumbull website. Public com comment should have been sent by email to C Lombardo at Trumbull Connecticut Gov. Twenty four hours in advance of the meeting or public comments can be made via phone or video conference connection at the public hearing. Dated um. Uh, at Trumbull, Connecticut, second day of April, two thousand twenty five, Richard H Gerard, Senior Chairman. Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission in town of Trumbull.
Thank you, Greg. All right, uh, I see Attorney Rizzio is here, I'm assuming, uh, you know, you're going to be. Walking us through.
Chair, members of commission, my name is Raymond Rizzio. Attorney with the office of ten Saskahoe Road in Fairfield, Connecticut, here representing Amelia Ferry, Amelia. Ferry with regard to uh the three applications, one for four Sycamore Street. Second was six Sycamore Street and the other one is on Sycamore Street, but it's known as lot three twenty one, as it's, as there is no um. Construction requested on the site, it's just a matter of um hopefully getting approval for this uh relocated retaining wall. Um, Tatiana, if you wouldn't mind putting up a probably the, the site plan and the um. And uh Will Kenny's uh. Wetland buffer enhancement plan, which has been filed. We can take you through this, if you can also add William Bill Kenny. As somebody who be, need to be able to talk, cause he's gonna present after I take you through this very shortly. And um, and Amelia Ferry also is online to answer any other questions you folks may have.
Okay, I have promoted Bill Kenny and Amelia, okay. Would uh Bill like to share his remediation plan, would that be easier?
Good question.
Bill can put that to start.
Yes, just give me a second.
The only thing is Bill's plan only shows. I believe lot six and lot three twenty-one, so we want, probably want to show three, we probably want to show the site plan also.
Um, uh, the, uh, plan that was from the original permit?
Oh, you can show both then, Bill, that'd be great.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Ray, you still there?
Hmm. All right, Chairman, if you're ready, so these are three lot, they're, it's basically three lots that are old lots. Um. The one, uh, which is four Sycamore Street currently has a house on it awaiting a C O. The, the house next to it has a, um. The, what do you call it, the, uh, foundation put in. And the third lot, which is lot three twenty-one, also there in a Sycamore Street, is a street, is a, is a lot that hopes to get. Uh, approved in the future for construction, it is a separate lot. Owned by separate entities, um, however, hopefully in the future. This is Sycamore Street, which runs in front of, has frontage on all three lots. We hope that, we hope to pursue an abandonment of the, of the un. Improved portion, which basically takes you halfway through lot two and all the way through lot three. So what's happened here is, uh, since the construction of the first home. Um, there was a, there was a retaining wall, an old retaining wall. That, uh, was on property owned by owners on Madison, that was on property owned by owners on Madison Avenue. Um, the owners of Madison Avenue, they've signed the application, they have agreed to it, I think it's forty-eight seventy-five. To transfer the area where the. Um, old retaining wall is over to, oh, that property to us, we've gone to contract on that. And what happened is there was fear of this old, the, the, the owner at, um. At forty-two seventy-nine. Was concerned that this old retaining wall could collapse, was on his property and could collapse. So what our client did was, we basically took down this, this old retaining wall. Built a new retaining wall and is now acquiring the piece of property where that blue line is. So that the whole new retaining wall is on, is on our property. Um, that is really what is the, the essence of what we're dealing with, with four Sycamore Street. Then what happens with six Sycamore Street as, as we move further down the line. Um, and maybe Bill, at this point, you can put your, I think your plan comes more into effect. As to how.
No, uh, I'm, I'm gonna interrupt you for a moment, I think it would be better if we go. Application by, or property by property, so this.
That, that kind of is the, the, the one property which, which has already been taken care of and the, the wall has been completed. Then what, what, what occurs here is that there's been a remediation plan that was required where. What happened was as Mister Ferry was basically filled in some area here. Um, from, it wasn't trucked in, it was taken from the found, you know, the construction of the foundation. And that, that area, that material was used to stabilize. And fill this air, this, um, steep sloped area. Uh, he had a building permit for this area, I don't think anybody at the time when he was digging the. Considered that he actually needed to come back to wetlands, um, to create this additional. Um. Uh, additional, for the filling of this additional sloped area. So there is a building permit, this was, this, this foundation was not put in without a building permit. The issue that comes in is the work that was done. In this regulated area, which is filling from the provo's foundation. From, from the existing, actually, it's now an existing foundation. I'll have Bill Kenny take it from here, which is what, who's been associated with the property. As to how we plan to restore this area and clean this area up.
Uh, good evening, I'm Bill Kenny with William Kenny Associates in Fairfield, uh, professional. Wetland scientists, soil scientist and landscape architect, so we were asked to. Um, prepare a plan to. To address the s- steep slope and fill that was placed. On the, what side are we on, on the western side of, of Sycamore Street? Um, the lot that's under construction now, where there's a foundation in, and, um. Their previous wall, I, I believe was in this. Area here. In the back of the lot, on the north side of the lot, and now, uh, they built. The new wall just outside of that, and they'd like to, and much of the wall that I just drew is. Completed in, they're proposing to. Eliminate that steep fill slope. Uh, and replace it with a retaining wall, which we propose, we prepared a section. That's below the plan view, we have the plan view at the top of the drawing and a section view on the bottom. Um, and we're proposing to, uh. Put that retaining wall there to eliminate that very steep slope, which comes down. Something like, like that, and so we'd remove all that fill, put in a retaining wall, uh, vegetate. At the base of the wall, to the wetland with native plants, and then also provide a native. Native planting buffer at the top of the wall. Um, and have a boulder demarcation feature there at the edge of the lawn, so in total. You end up with, uh, a good twenty or more feet of, um. Buffer between the house and the wetland, and it's in a step format. And by having the wall, it's a much more stable condition than it is today. Um, and I, I looked back, there was, uh, fill there. Um. We were on, we were on site in twenty twenty-one, and there was fill there. Um, not to the extent that there is today, but there was a steep slope there with Japanese knotweed growing on it and, um. And whatnot, so, uh, the proposed plan is to remove the fill to. Put in this wall, stabilize that area, revegetate it with native plants. Um. That includes native ground cover, native shrubs and, and some native trees. And, uh, also, uh, control the Japanese knotweed that's growing in this area. Uh, that is not shown on the drawing, but it is something that the owner, I, I did speak with the owner about that, and they're. They're okay with, uh, controlling that knotweed. Which, um, occurs. Uh. Both to the, just on the north end of the lot and on the western end of the lot.
Uh, Bill, I have a quick comment, you're implying that the wall hasn't been yet built?
The section, one section. This area here has not been built yet.
Um, and that goes into, uh, what is that, the one that's called, uh?
Lot three twenty-one.
Three twenty, yeah, I know it was three something.
Yes, that, yeah, lot three twenty-one, we have it.
Okay, and what is the purpose of that, it's supposed to stabilize the, uh?
Right, if you look at the section, this is the wall in the section view. To, um. It gives them some, if, if, uh, this is the house here. And, uh, a lawn area around the house, so they have access around the house, and then create this buffer and have it step down. Uh, using the wall, a boulder demarcation, large, uh, boulders that would form a. Curb up on the up, upper portion of the wall, but also make it, uh. It would be a continuous low boulder wall, so that mowers aren't crossing that, uh, easily.
It's right now, the wall that, uh, that. Butts the neighbor, that's about ten foot off their, uh, the property there.
Chairman, what's happened is that, that old wall, if you can see, there's a triangular section up there. You'll see it kind of dotted line, there's a dotted line above where it says six Sycamore Street. That dotted line is the old, is the, will be the former property line of six Sycamore Street. The. Owner of forty-two eighty-five Madison Avenue really wanted this, did not want this old wall on his property. Our client rebuilt the wall and has acquired. The land, will be acquiring the land from forty-two eighty-five, so he has complete control and all liability for that wall. Which also then protects, brings, brings any kind, protects from any kind of in. Intrusion into that existing brook, which is totally on forty-two eighty-five, does that make any sense?
Yep.
All right, what we'll do. This triangular piece where, this triangular piece on six Sycamore. That's, that goes between, i- is, is what's coming from six, from forty-two eighty-five to six Sycamore. So that the ferries will now have complete control of the wall and all liability associated with the wall, and then create. A landscape buffer, both on. The, the revised forty-two eighty-five lot line. And along to, to protect the wetlands and protect the brook. So you really have a strong demarcation here, you have, you have a cleaning of this. Kind of was a former dumping ground by everybody kind of in the neighborhood. Um, and now having it as a, you know, a, uh, a, a, an established buffer. That we don't believe with the way, with the plan that Mister Kenny is proposing. Uh, will limit the amount of any intrusion into, into the wetlands and certainly into the brook.
All right, let's do this, finish your, uh, presentation for three twenty-one, and then we'll, uh, we'll go to Tatiana.
That three twenty-one will just be, Bill, if can, Bill, you can finish it with the extension of the wall and.
Right, on, on three twenty-one, it is, that's where the new wall, the new length of wall is proposed. Um, so. Everything I was just describing was primarily on three twenty-one. And a little bit on Sycamore, six Sycamore.
All right. Tatiana, you want to, uh, start with, um. Application twenty-five dash zero nine, give us your thoughts on that one.
Sure, I'm trying to pull up the. Survey that was provided, give me one sec. Oh, um, Bill, could you stop sharing, please?
Yes. As long as I can figure out, there you go, there we go.
Okay, uh, so that is a. A survey that was submitted to us. Um, where approved, originally approved topography was compared with. Uh, currently existing in red, and then in blue what is also proposed, um. I think at the last meeting, there was a question about a source of the fill, and I believe I heard that it was excavated from the. For the foundation, well, if you do a quick calculation, the footprint of. Now, the house is about eighteen hundred square feet. Um, and it appears from the topography that on average, they would have to excavate. Um, just few feet, uh, so the. Numbers don't really add up to the amount of fill that, um, was brought to the site. Um, though, there was no, not enough, um. Eighteen hundred cubic yards is what was brought originally, oh, I'm sorry. In, back in March, but also for the roadway construction, uh, there appears to be some piles of materials that were pushed onto the lots. Um, so there is a lot of fill of, uh, unknown source. Um, that the. Commission may want to. Um, investigate, uh, I also had conversations with other town departments and they would like. Um, well, they need a building permit, obviously, for the wall as it's about ten feet high, um. And they would like. Um, it inspected by a third party, so that pertains to number four and number six Sycamore, because. That wall has been built on those lots, um. For the fill, also, there will be requirement for P N Z special permit, um. And, uh, I would highly encourage the commission to define the scope. Of the site monitor report and assure that moving forward, um, those reports, um. Verify compliance with whatever the commission approves. So there is no, um, encroachment beyond what's actually approved. Uh, as in this case, it's rather vast, uh, about seventy feet going to lot C. Where original approval stated that this line should be a limit of disturbance and obviously encroaching onto. Um, this property and bringing about eighteen hundred cubic yard of fill. Hmm. And that's, that's about it for me for now, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and that's just concerning, um, number four Sycamore that we're talking about, right?
Um, it actually, uh, applies to pretty much all of them, um, but it just to, okay, clarify for four Sycamore. Building permit, third party inspection for the wall, um, updating scope of site monitor. Um, I think the commission also at the walk wanted perhaps the property corners staked, um. For six Sycamore. Same requirements for the wall. Um, and site monitor, also the P N Z special permit, um. And corners. And for all of them, I'm not sure what the commission wants to do with the fill. And.
You're suggesting what boring is right to find out, uh, what is actually in the fill?
Yeah, I don't know the source of the fill, so.
Chairman, um, we have no problem with the recommendations made by Tatiana. I have Amelia Ferry, uh, online here tonight with us who can explain, she's. First, she is, it is her home that will be, uh, number four, uh, so. It, it, she, I know she's desperately looking to clo- I think the home is complete, it's just waiting to see, oh, which can't be, uh. Accomplished until we get this approval, um, but she can address, she's been on site. For the beginning can address basically the source of any fill, Amelia, if you can step forward, be great.
Sure, can everybody hear me? My name is Amelia Ferry, I'm the applicant for four, six and three twenty-one Sycamore Street, um. I am the architect for all the sites and the, um, proposed owner of four Sycamore. Um, just to inform the, the commission, I would like to go ahead and share my screen. Um, you had mentioned, um, wanting to maybe perhaps go through this a little bit more defined, I can go ahead and. Share the. Site plan, so if it. Does justice, what we can do is, this application is specifically asking for the approval of the retaining wall. The location of the infiltration system and the modification of the topography. So for, for number four specifically, um, just. You know, following that lead, so the retaining wall here, as, uh, Attorney Rizio had mentioned, uh, was, um, in not great shape. So once it was moved from the, uh, original location, which is here. Uh, as you see, it just kind of went straight, uh, east-west on the properties. Originally, um, it was about seventeen feet from the wetland line, and it was moved actually, um. Over thirty-five feet away from the wetland line and, uh, a little bit more parallel with that brook line. So with that, um, the. It naturally changed the, uh, geometry of this angle, and so we had. Uh, returned that retaining wall back over to four Sycamore Street, so. With that said, the, the fill, um, we have had, we have a big, um, excavation on four and six. These are walkout basements, um, they go over nine feet tall in the basement area. So from the top in the front of the yards, you know, we're, we're at, you know, the three fifteen line. And then we're going all the way down to the, um, you know, the three or the two, the two hundreds, the upper two hundreds, so the fill. So the fill did come a lot from, um, both of these. Now, as you also know, the street is being defined and a lot of that material that had to be excavated down and, you know, compacted also came from the site. So there's the material that just basically got pushed and pulled and moved and redistributed, okay? Um, so for parcel A, that's what we're, uh, seeking approval of. In addition, we originally had an infiltration system, uh, kind of centered in the lot. And, uh, we are, are asking for approval for it to be pushed back in case down the line, we want to come back for any other, um, land applications, um, and it won't be in our way. Um, for lot B, which is our six Sycamore Street, um, same approval for, uh, that we're seeking for the red retaining wall, the proposed infiltration line to run parallel with it, the, um, the regrading and then the rear deck onto, um, to that land. And then lastly, the lot three twenty-one, which, um, has been already been, uh, described by, uh, Bill Kenny and the boulders, the intent on the boulders, uh, encroaching lot C had more to do with the runoff and the intention of trying to help any kind of stormwater management there. It wasn't done in any ill intent. Um, it was really realistically just trying to make sure nothing was being pushed over from the parcel B or six Sycamore into any kind of, um, active wetland area. So at this point, the portion that Bill Kenny had mentioned would be basically returning that wall to run parallel with the, uh, the wetland, um, uh, line on that lot C or the three twenty-one lot. So, uh, and the modification of the encroachment there.
Hey Tatiana, on lot C, how far did they go into that property? Something like, what was it, seventy feet or something you said?
Yeah, about seventy feet in measures, yep.
And how much, uh, fill?
On lot C-
Eight hundred yards or something?
Eight hundred forty-three yards on number six. Seven hundred eighty-seven on number four, one eighty-six. And again, just multiplying the footprint of the foundation um, by three feet, we arrive at about two hundred cubic yards. So probably number four Sycamore, they, uh, it, the, the amount of fill is comparable to the amount excavated from the foundation. The other two, the numbers just don't add up unless there were several houses that had to be excavated there. It's pure math.
All right, I'm reading through here, um.
Amelia, for the record, with, uh, my understanding, you did not, you guys did not import any fill onto the property. This all came from either the roadway that was finished or the, um, or the, or the foundations and surrounding landscaping.
To my knowledge, that's correct.
Tatiana, a question. I know, uh, like I said, when I've done work over in Fairfield, not only do I have to do reports, I do pictures. Bill, did you have to, uh, provide any weekly pictures or anything on this?
We did, we provided pictures on a regular basis, yes.
And what's a regular basis?
Uh, whenever we completed our reports, um.
I believe if, if I may, um, this is Amelia Ferry again, um, when the construction of four Sycamore was happening, it was every week or every two weeks, something of that nature. And then it moved to every, uh, storm, every rainstorm. It was, um, it was lessened as that went forward. Uh, and so now it's been a, uh, um, interim site visits based on stormwater.
Okay, uh, Tatiana, do you agree with that? Is that what was happening? Because what we're trying to determine is why so much fill came into this site. You know? And where it came from.
Uh, the, the frequency of the report, uh, I, I have to look, but yes, it sums it up about right, um. Um, they were more frequent in the beginning and then, um, lessened in frequency. And again, I, I would encourage the commission to kind of define the scope of the monitor, um, as we move forward and perhaps define the frequency of the reports.
Well, again, not to beat a dead horse, but on commercial projects in Fairfield that I did every week plus pictures, if you didn't do anything that week, they still wanted a report and they still wanted pictures showing that nothing got done. So, all right, I'm going to open this up to the, uh, commission. Questions, comments, thoughts? Should we, uh, remove the, uh, plans? What do you think? Okay, go ahead, David.
Through the chair. These properties have been in front of this commission numerous times over the years. And from what I'm gathering, this ten-foot-tall retaining wall was constructed without permits and without approval from this commission. And pleading ignorance of, you know, our oversight here is, I don't think acceptable. Um, I'm just flabbergasted that we're at this point where we're issuing approvals or discussing something for, um, forgiveness rather than permission. And it was clearly, this work was done without consideration for permits or for approval from the public agencies and import of material in excess of what was, you know, supposed to happen. Working on lots that they weren't supposed to be working on. There were piles of material on the previous application that were in the roadway that, to my knowledge, I don't know where those went and those were of questionable source and, and content. It just, I'm kind of a little surprised at, you know, the extent of work that's been happened here without permits and without, you know, consideration of the commission. I'm just, I'm shocked.
All right, other comments?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
I've walked this site, I've seen this site, I've reviewed this site for sixteen years. And, uh, in that sixteen-year period, there have been mountains of fill and the mountains have gone. And, uh, there was a fence, there was a problem with the fence once and then the fence vaporized, maybe Scotty beamed it up. I don't know, because a lot of stuff came and go, came and went, nobody knows. Vehicles parked in the right of way, the vehicles left. Uh, I, I'm happy to see someone finally trying to come and remediate the problem. Um, but Mr. Vreski brings up one interesting point that the source of fill is somewhat concerning. Um, the, the work done on site without, uh, without a permit uh, leads to wondering if, if it was done properly, um. It's not an effort to be punitive, but rather to make sure that it was done correctly so it doesn't fail. Retaining walls are serious business. And, um, you know, the, the, the last thing we want to happen is somebody to build on soil that's supported by a retaining wall that wasn't built properly because of poor oversight or lack of oversight. Um. I also think that, that, that road abandonment is, is a solid plan, but has to be done properly. Obviously, that's outside the purview of wetlands. That part makes sense. It's great. Um, and it allows the existing, um, approvals that have been there for quite some time uh, to move forward, um, regardless of, of the disposition of this one. I believe there are two existing, um, approvals on that site with ZBA. I mean, they're ready, shovel ready, ready to go. Um, but Mr. Vreski's point about, uh, and maybe I'm expanding upon his point about the potential, um, risk of failure of that retaining walls is, uh, perhaps something that Tatiana could address. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, I, I will tell you, there's no excuse for some of the work that was done. I think our client did not do it to just thumb his nose at the commission. I think he thought he was taking down a, a wall that was compromised, moving it further from the wetlands and, uh, should have come back before you, especially, I mean, it's the kind of thing that there's building permits there, the work's going on there. Um, but there's no excuse for not handling this in the proper order. Um. We'll, we'll have to, we, we have no problem with any of the recommendations Tatiana makes with regard to making sure this wall is safe. Um, and, uh, and if, if there's any further, um, I know the commission's been understanding about if they want any testing done, any of the fill that's there to confirm that nothing's come from off-site or anything that would be damaging to the wetlands, damaging to the neighborhood or anything else, uh, you know, you know, our, our, our mistake, we'll, we'll, we'll do what's necessary to make this commission comfortable, hopefully gain some confidence. So if we do have to come back in the future, everything's made right, everything's cleaned up. And in a, in a, in an inappropriate manner, in an out-of-order manner, um, I do think this ends up in a much better situation. Never like to be here begging for forgiveness. Um, but I do think, I, I, I don't think there was an intent to just thumb their nose at the commission, but I do apologize for the way things have gone down.
Uh, you had your hand up before, Bob? Go ahead.
Yes, question. Um, what's going to happen to the existing soil, that huge amount of soil? That was, uh, close to the, uh, foundation. And the second one to, uh, Jim Cardone, our attorney. Uh, does he need to permit or our approval to go on to build that wall on three? On lot three? It seems like it's imposing on lot three, but there's no permission given for any kind of development on that lot. I guess the first question goes to the, uh, either Bill Kenny or Attorney Rizio. The second question to you, is that, is that initially, uh, construction started on a non-permitted area, lot three?
Do you want me to address that or Bill Kenny, we want to address that? I mean, I think the, the, the lot three is an app, is, is a, is a party to this application, the owner of lot three. So all, all three lots are subject to where this wall has been rebuilt.
Now, the question is, do we, is that a separate permit for that? That's the question to attorney.
We will be, we'll need to get a separate permit for that, yes.
Okay. And the other question is, what's going to happen with this soil, that huge amount of soil?
If soil was in place and I think it's stabilized and going to be held and held up behind the wall, I mean, uh, maybe Bill Kenny, you can address that or, or Amelia?
That, the soil was, the wall certainly will provide a, a very good, um, barrier and protection for, from erosion and hold that, hold that soil back.
Right now, it's covered with tarp and you're saying that soil is going to be, um, around the lot? That, what's that you're saying?
Oh, uh, I'm not familiar with the exact pile that maybe you're referring to.
I can address that, that, the, the mountain, the, the soil there, that's topsoil under that. So that's, uh, uh, intended for, you know, grass later, you know, and topsoil on top of, um, you know, your finished braid.
That soil, Amelia, that was scraped and preserved as you were doing the construction, correct?
I believe so. I, as from what I understand, it's topsoil, it's clean virgin soil.
The other question, are you asking, are you asking for permit to do something beyond lot three beside the wall?
Correct. We would have, we have to go back, we'd have to come back to you, we, to move forward with any kind of construction on lot three. We need, we really need to get the, the road abandoned so that we can bring any kind of structure. Originally, there was a structure that was planned there without a road abandonment. We ended up withdrawing that application. What we need to do is abandon Sycamore Street so that we can, we, we will get ownership of Sycamore, of that portion of Sycamore Street and pull any structure further away from the wetlands. But that is not before us tonight and the abandonment of Sycamore Street is going to have to come, have to occur before you ever hear from us again.
I guess, Mr. Cardone, can the, can the wall be constructed? Should that be constructed? That should be part of the lot three itself, a separate entity altogether. Is that the beginning of the construction project when we do something on lot three with, with the wall being built? That sets a stage for future, uh, approvals on the lot based on the wall?
I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm following the, uh, fact pattern here. So the, the wall is going to be partially on lot three and which you would approve.
Three, two, one, lot two, three, three, two, one.
Right. And so, um, I guess, uh, any approval of that, you know, you can make a condition that, um, any other activity on lot three would require an additional permit. Does that answer your question?
That would answer the question, yes.
We have no problem with that as a condition.
I think, I, I think you would, would specify that to eliminate any sort of ambiguity.
Okay, that would clarify, that would clarify. Thank you.
I think so, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Tatiana, on three, two, one. With all those gigantic boulders that are down towards the, uh, wetlands there. What do you, uh, what were you projecting as far as the number of cubic, uh, yards? Because that whole area has got, uh, built up with quite a bit of soil. Again, it's my understanding, three twenty-one didn't have the okay to do anything on that property. Am I wrong or am I right?
That's correct. Uh, so according to the application submitted, the volume of the fill on lot three two one is eight hundred forty-three cubic yards.
Idea where that all came from? Because that's more than a bucket or two.
That, that was the question from the staff that-
It's like forty trucks.
Um, and additionally, I did want to know that there is, um, although a minor, however, there is a bit of a fill that extends beyond Sycamore Street, but it is still within the town right of way. And although there are plans for abandonment, but currently all that fill should be removed uh, as the town doesn't want to take responsibility for any potential contaminants or anything of that nature. So that, that, that should just be.
We have no problem with that as a condition of approval.
What section is that again, Tatiana?
Well, well, that, that's not even within the property owner, oh, oh, hmm. It's beyond lot C. It's basically Sycamore Street extends, um, onto lot three twenty-one. And I don't know if I can pull up my map.
Yeah, it's the unimproved section of Sycamore Street, which is technically still, it's not really, yeah, it's a, it's a paper street effectively. Once it goes midway beyond the halfway point of six Sycamore.
All right, there we go. So Sycamore Street stops here and all that new material that should just be removed because this is town right of way.
Chairman, agree to remove any of that material until, immediately?
Appreciate it.
So all of the material that's on lot three here, where they're talking about the wall, was all placed there without a permit as well? Is that correct?
Is that for me?
Um, I, I, I'll let you field it if you want to take it.
Can I duck?
No. I think there might have been some there previously based on some old photos that we have.
But there was, there was no permit in place for them to place fill within, up to the wetlands limit line in place when this work was done.
Right, since the permit was issued in twenty twenty-one, yep.
And we had concerns about the activity on this property and, you know, lots of going, lots of stuff going on without permits and at that point in time. And here we are back again looking at stuff, lots of stuff that was done without permits here in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, we've, we've talked about all this soil, but where did all of those huge boulders- Okay, we've talked about all this soil, but where did all of those huge boulders come from? Because that's all up and down that side of the property going down into the wetland section there.
I don't know, my understanding, they came from the property, but that was my understanding when I walked the property with the owner.
I mean, we're not talking a couple, it's quite a few.
No, I agree.
It's, yeah, one of the things that we thought was to return this back to its natural state because again, this was all done without, well, everything's been done without a permit, so.
Chairman, and this is not to make any excuse, I think not in the right, as I said, not in the right order, not in the right, correct manner. But what exists now based on what that, the old wall was, and the previous dumping ground where neighbors just used it to dump, you know, dead trees, lawn clippings, everything else. The current state of affairs, and maybe Bill Kenny hopefully will agree with me at this, is that the current condition of the property is much better than its original state. That doesn't give any excuse for the way we got there. But I don't think returning it to its original state does anything to, to certainly help protect or put the wetlands in a better spot than, protect the wetlands in a better way than currently exists. And Bill, maybe you can comment on that and I can duck.
I agree that the use of a wall was the best slope stabilization that you could have. And I also agree, structurally, it needs to be designed and constructed properly. And I understand, I understand that there's documentation regarding this wall. And it's beyond my expertise to deal with that, but if, when you have a wall, it's a it's a protector for the wetlands when you have lots of this size that are close by.
I'm confused, what do you mean by the documentation for this wall? I'm lost.
I can speak, I can speak on that. We have structural drawings from a licensed structural engineer from over a year ago for those walls. And we would be submitting that for the permits as well. And we have documentation of the overseeing of those, the construction of those walls as well. So they are designed by structural, a structural engineer licensed in Connecticut.
Well, again, it would have been nice had, you know, you come to us and then also buildings, so we would have known what was happening because again, you didn't just go in the exact location, you know, you expand it and different things. So what if we do this? Let's open it to the commission. What are your thoughts on number four, Sycamore? Questions, thoughts?
Go ahead, Greg. You're muted, Greg.
I'm sorry, yeah. Engineering on lot four, engineering needs whatever documentation, structural design, all the documentation for that wall construction needs to be turned over to engineering before. We can't do anything on wetlands on whether that wall's safe or not, but that's going to be reviewed by the town. I think Tatiana, if I heard you right, you're saying the fill on the property for grating to the wall is close to what came out of the foundation, dig? Is that correct?
On number four, Sycamore, that is correct, yeah.
So we don't, if they brought in fill, extra fill for that area, it's likely not a lot. And then the final question on number four that I sense is they want to move the to stormwater retention basin? Did I understand that? Yes. Correct me, right, we're moving that further back into the property?
That is correct. It's going to be closer to the retaining wall, parallel with it.
Is it in the ground now there?
I'm sorry?
Are the, is the retention basin in, under, under all that fill right now? You're going to dig it all up and move it?
No, no, it is in the current location that we're asking approval for. It's been reviewed and inspected.
Okay, in its existing location.
It's an existing location which differs as a modification to the original twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Do we have those prints, Tatiana?
The site plan submitted with the redlining shows the existing location of the stormwater system.
I saw the existing. Do we know what they want to do new?
I don't believe they want to change that on number four, Sycamore. That's there, it's already in the ground and they're seeking approval for that discrepancy. Let me, let me share the screen again because.
Tatiana, were those calculations done based on the hydrostatic loading of, for this concrete retaining wall? Was it, the engineering for those concrete retaining walls, was that done based on the hydrostatic loading of having the infiltrators right behind it?
I have not seen any documentation for the retaining walls. But that is a concern because the proximity to the retaining wall to the stormwater system should be certified by a licensed engineer, structural engineer. So that is the new location of the wall. The original approval of stormwater system had it in this location.
And I see a proposed overflow there going across parcel B. Do they need an easement across parcel B to allow that work to continue or to make it legal?
It should be finalized before CO. We typically, it's under same ownership, but before CO, an easement should be filed, yes.
There should be an easement there, yes.
All right, so we're discussing number four. Any other comments from the commission?
Through the chair?
Go ahead, Carmine.
So going back to the retention system, the original application was as it's shown on the drawing that Tatiana just had up. But did they put it there or is it in the spot where they're asking for approval?
It's in the spot that they're asking for approval.
They did not build it to the original application.
That is correct. Everything is read, is in the ground.
How do we know it's built the right way? It sounds like it wasn't inspected, correct?
The building wall hasn't been permitted or inspected by anyone.
But what about the retention basin? Do you know if that's been inspected during construction?
It may have been by the applicant's engineer, not by the town staff.
Okay, so you didn't know documentation on that?
We have documentation that it's been inspected.
By who?
By the civil engineer, Rostisso.
Is that something normally done by our engineering department, Tatiana?
Both, both. The procedure is that the applicant's engineer inspects and certifies it. So we do require a final S-bill by LS and a certification letter by PE. But in this particular case, a structural engineer should also be part of the equation because of the proximity and also structural integrity of the wall due to the height.
Have we received the documentation on that, Tatiana?
I haven't received anything, so that's what we're requesting.
Is there a reason why it hasn't been submitted? We have documentation that's certified?
So just to separate these things, the stormwater system, typically the documentation is submitted prior to CO and that hasn't been applied yet. That is why the applicant is before the commission. I think they're trying to get the wetland permit corrected before they can apply for CO and they can correct me if I'm wrong on that. The building, the retaining wall requires a separate building permit.
Right.
And so that has to be done.
Yeah, well, what is the commission's thought on the borings to check to see what the materials are in the soil? The other thing that would have really helped, because I've walked this site so many, many times, is lot corners, stakes that we could determine, you know, where four, you know, ended and six began and same thing where three twenty-one. I put that out to the commission, what are your thoughts? Any other thoughts on this one otherwise?
I agree.
David, I'm sorry.
I agree, I think the soil borings would be useful here to determine the nature of the material.
I think the stake should be put in the spot, I think the stake should be put in place to demarcate the lots in particulars that we want.
All right, so let's go to six. What's the thought of the commission on six?
I have a question.
Go ahead, David.
If engineering determines that these walls weren't built sufficiently and that all this work has to come down, that's a significant activity that would be occurring again on this site. I mean, I just have a lot of questions about this whole process of whether we can even approve what's shown based on, you know, nothing's been permitted, inspected, everything's coming in after the fact. It's just, it's very confusing.
I would think that anything that, if for some reason, which we don't believe because it was professionally engineered, if for some reason this does not, wall does not pass muster, my recommendation to the commission would be that we'd have to come back to you that, you know, all, that we'd have to come back to you for any, for a remediation with a remediation plan and a corrective plan to handle, to handle the wall before any additional work is done or any or any, any other work is done on any of the other lots. So that until that wall's known to be safe, it prevents us from kind of moving forward with anything. I understand, I understand your point, Commissioner Pressby.
That, that, that practice, Mr. Rizio, hasn't been done. The history of the property is not the case, what you're saying.
I can't speak for the history, I can just speak with the predicament we're in now and I apologize to the commission. I can't tell you, you can put those requirements in and you have the ability until that wall's deemed safe to, you know, you have a, you have a house, a lot there with a foundation and that doesn't move forward until such time as that wall's proven safe. So you do have, there is not the ability to move forward with additional work until that wall's deemed safe. So it's not like there won't be consequences. You got a, somebody who's got lumber there, he's got a foundation there, he's got a house that's ready to move forward, that won't move forward until that lot's deemed safe by engineering, that wall's deemed safe by engineering.
All right, so on six, we're, you know, basically a lot of what happened on four. Also, I know Tatiana said something about a P and Z permit, a special permit for the amount of fill that went in. I don't know if you want to discuss that, Tatiana? And again, third-party inspection of the wall and all that, stake in the corners. All right, any discussion on that before we go to lot C?
Will we get documentation in form of pictures like similar towns do? That's the commission.
I don't know, just not for nothing, but I've got almost twenty years' experience with this, this property. I've been going back and forth and I figured I've done something now seventeen to eighteen walks on it, so. And, you know, and there's been lapses in different things between times and, you know, things started and then things stopped and, you know, different commissions they had to go to, but. All right, let's talk about three twenty-one. Tatiana, let me see here, let's see. Do I have to give thought to the amount of fill that went into there, whether we would consider removing it, bring it back to natural state? Borings of the fill, testings for contaminants? What's the thoughts of the commission?
Through the chair?
Go ahead, Carmine.
It keeps coming back to those boulders. You know, I've been on that property a number of times, the boulders were not there to that extent. And in my opinion, they had to have been brought in. I don't think they came from the property.
It's part of the purpose of the boulders, I don't see Mr. Kenny, I know he's pictured there, but is it mainly to stabilize the, that slope because we're talking a heck of a lot of fill that went into that and just an unbelievable amount of boulders that are going down that slope.
So the current design is to remove all those boulders on the surface there, pull that, pull that back to allow for the construction of the wall.
And where, and where do those said boulders go? You know, they just going to continue down into the wetlands or? That was a concern. If we got some heavy rains for a while, I didn't see the, that slope being stabilized, that it would just continue down, you know? So.
I think a plan, we could provide a sequence where he, the, my understanding is the wall is constructed with large precast concrete, massive precast concrete blocks that allow you to build this wall in sections. And, and so you, rather than open up that whole slope all at once, you could build it and, and peel back the slope as you move along with the, with the wall. And thereby minimize the amount of disturbance that's open at, at any time. So I could certainly look at that and put together a document that shows that for the record, so you have that for the record and because I fully appreciate what you're saying. We have that steep slope that comes down right to the edge of the wetland and as that is pulled back to build this wall, you want to make sure that you're not going to have a massive failure there.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that wall is basically to secure the integrity of number six, Sycamore, because then it's right in the middle of the three twenty-one. How do you build around that? Do you fill that up and then build a wall where all the boulders are to stabilize that? I'm trying to get a feel for it.
I think that, I'm not sure if I fully understand, but in my, well, let me just say, if, without property lines in mind, that you're constructing between the house and the toe of the slope of, of the existing slope. And so you're working in that whole zone there, the peel back those boulders, pull back the slope so that you can get down and put the foundation in for that wall and start to build it up. So it will be, although it was constructed to create a plateau so they could work around that house, now that that foundation is in, in some ways, that, that becomes a great barrier. The house foundation is there. So now we're just concerned with the soil that exists between the house foundation and the wetland. So now he could pull back that slope, pull back those boulders and cut back the slope so that he can build that wall. And it's helpful to have the house foundation there now as something, as a backup, right? it's helpful to have the house foundation there now as something as a backup right right behind you. When you're working in that area, because it limits, you don't have three hundred feet of slope where water's coming down. Um, it it really defines a smaller area that's protected by the house foundation on one side. And so they'll they'll be working in that area and pulling that slope back, cutting it back, overcutting it so that they can build that wall.
But again, they're working in an area that's not permitted either, right?
Uh, so they did and we're here before you to ask your permission to to fix that.
I I guess what I'm kind of leaning towards is think we kind of have to know what is your game plan and end game as far as what you want to do with that lot? Do you want to, you know, level it? And are you going to be putting a retaining wall there? Because right now you're piecemealing. Because all I see is that retaining wall is sort of a wing that comes off of uh six Sycamore in the good section of three twenty one. And how are you building on three twenty one if you've got this?
The the idea, Chairman, would be that in the future, many steps away, done in the correct order, our client will seek to have that portion of unapproved portion of Sycamore Street abandoned. If that happens, our client hopefully will retain possession of that property through which he would be able to hopefully sometime down the future with variances be able to to build a lot that would be further away from the wetlands up toward up on the flat the flattened the the flatter part of three twenty one. On would be the expanded portion of lot three twenty one. But until all that such happens, which is abandonment of a road, possession of the road, variance is obtained, will we be ever be back before this commission for any construction on that lot?
As I said, this has been a ongoing twenty year adventure. As I've been on the commission long a lot longer than that, so.
I had a full head of hair at that time, too.
Yeah, well, I didn't, but that's another story. I know Tatiana, what are your thoughts here? Uh, I'm I'm inclined to want to uh see the corner staked. I'd like to see the borings. I'm asking now, putting this out to the commission. I'm not dictating it, but I want to get your feedback. And kind of get the info back on where they put the retention basin, the integrity of that before we were to go ahead and vote on that. Same thing on six. I'd like now, and again, I'm saying my thoughts, I'm asking for the commission. Um, staked, get the uh testing for contaminants in the fill, stake the corners, uh, get an idea of the amount of actual fill there. And then I would like to have Mr. Kenny come out and take a look at lot C and tell us how you plan to stabilize that so that we can you know, you've got all those boulders there just sitting there and how you're going to wing that, because I'm I'm a little confused, so. And this is what you do for a living.
Okay, I think I I better understand your question now that you're asking. We're showing a length of wall, but then you're asking, is there going to be another wall that turns and runs parallel with Sycamore? And heads. You're asking about what?
Right now, we're just.
Beyond the end of the wall that we're showing. Yeah, okay.
Because again, as permits have been taken and different plans, you know, you you just sort of expand it. You just went in different directions and we're not really sure again. You know, is the wall up to stuff? Is it in, you know, integrity of the whole thing? So certification, so. I'm now going to pass it around to the commission. What are your thoughts, Greg? Let's go item by item so we can bring this to a conclusion here. Where do you stand?
My my sense on four is we make a motion to approve on four with three conditions, uh, that the applicant needs to um, obtain all structural design uh, and documentation from their engineers for the how the wall was constructed, needs to be turned over to engineering. A part of that is the structural engineer needs to certify the integrity of that wall with the new location for the retention stormwater retention basin. Um, site borings, I think we want site borings on that fill. I I I'm hearing two different stories here, but uh, there's a question of the integrity of the fill. I think four, there's a chance that they didn't bring in a lot of fill, but six and uh, three twenty one, I think are very questionable. What what's the quality of that fill? But the issue is, do we require site borings of the fill to determine the nature of it and should it be tested for contaminants? On four, I think it needs to be done on six and three twenty one. And then before the issuance of a CO on lot four, which is what I'm sensing the the applicant's biggest pressure is for right now, uh, we have to get that paperwork and make sure that wall is uh, sound, constructed right and you know, working through engine, the engineering guys, we have to get all that documentation in and looked at and signed off. That's and then six is kind of follows through on the same boat where six, before we approve anything, obviously that has to pass, but then we obviously I think would require site monitors for any more work for six or three twenty one.
Alright, so your thoughts are um to approve number four and then on six and three twenty one, we continue that and determine what we want done for the next meeting. Alright.
And when I say, when I say approve four, it's pending, they get.
Yeah, with the condition that I've written, I wrote them down, yeah. Where do you stand? Uh, go ahead, Carmine.
Um, regarding the borings, Tatiana, borings is plural, so that means two as a minimum. How many would you recommend it should be done?
Uh, great question. Um, I would do. So if the if the scope is only within number six and lot three twenty one, it would probably make sense to do three or four, just in random locations.
Per lot or?
No, no, I'm sorry, total. Total, but for both number six and three twenty one.
And could we get stakes so we know where the delineation is between four and six and then between six and three twenty one? So we know what we're looking at there. That would help. Anything else, Carmine?
Well, I was thinking more like three or four per lot, but.
Well, again, put it out there and we'll see what the commission thinks, you know, so. Our engineer thinks two per, you know, that's her area of expertise, so.
Uh, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead, Tatiana.
I just wanted to remind the commission that this is a public hearing, so perhaps at some point we should open it to the public.
Well, once we get, you know, thank you. Alright, how about you, Bob? What are your thoughts?
Now, one question, do we have to approval to the wall that associated with lot three? That's a request by the applicant. Do we have to approve that? Or is that necessary for the project going forward? Should that be, should we eliminate that as far as the poll?
Uh, through the chair.
Go ahead, Tatiana.
I'm wondering, it may actually benefit everyone here. I was wondering if the applicant considered an alternative of kind of turning that wall a little bit, so instead of encroaching on lot C, it rather aligns with a property line between number six and lot and three twenty one. And even thinking kind of down the road, if there is a house, they probably will not want a wall that is kind of bisecting their yard in a very random location. Uh, that's one thought. And also, if the property ownership is transferred, then there may be potential liability issues down the road where repairs are needed and that is a piece of that or that piece of the wall is owned by someone else, it just becomes a nightmare. So perhaps an alternate could be considered here to um, make it easy on everyone, so just.
Well, that was the request, that don't build a wall, you're saying. That part of the wall.
That I I was really suggesting turning um that piece of the wall so that it aligns with the property line. And let me just just so everyone is on the same page. So that piece can everyone see that? So it aligns with the property line. Okay, that's one suggestion. There could be other alternatives that there is minimize encroachment on lot C, um, that could be considered.
Did you comment from Jim Cardon? Any thoughts on it, Jim?
No, that that's up to the applicant and they want to make that modification.
Yeah, Chairman, if you're going to continue, if you would, if hypothetically, if lot unit lot four was approved tonight or four Sycamore was approved tonight with the conditions Tatiana expected, uh, suggested, and then you have six and three twenty one continued, we can look at those, uh, the suggestions by the town engineer and come back to the commission next month.
With alternates that would.
Alternates, yes.
Because actually, in my humble opinion, it's an excellent thing because I don't know how down the line are you going to be doing three twenty one when you've got this wall, right? Sort of not in the middle of your property, but it's taken up a good piece of it.
We can have an engineer back here with this next month and 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 go through, go through some alternates for you, but that would that's if we move forward with approving, hopefully approving lot four tonight, uh, for Sycamore and six and three twenty one being continued to take into all the suggestions, uh, and alternate plans that would come back before you next month.
Alright, David.
On lot four, uh, the wall certification, especially with the retention system behind it, a third party engineer is essential, needs to get done. At least three soil borings behind that wall. Are they proposing any plantings on this property at all, or is this just going to be grass up to the top of the wall? Um, so I would love to see some sort of planting on this property. Um, if it's a ten foot high wall, is there a fence on top of that that prevents people from falling off of it?
Uh, that that would be part of the building permit review and sign off, but most certainly that is a safety hazard.
Right. Um, so those things would be what I would be looking for for that. On lot six, again, the wall certification, um, it needs an easement for in favor of lot for
Three twenty one, yeah.
To allow for that proposed overflow to extend across um, parcel B there. And then, you know, plantings on top of the wall, fence, et cetera, building permit for all of that. And on lot three, it's pretty clear that this area and this development has been long used as a dumping ground for contractors' operations. Um, and I agree with Tatiana, the wall should be realigned to align with the property line. Um, there needs to be an easement filed in favor of lots four and six for the scour hole um, and a maintenance of such plan so that that gets cleaned out on a regular basis. And there should be a site monitor that's visiting this site on a regular basis. If it's monthly or twice a month or something to ensure that this site isn't continued to be used as a contractor's dumping ground as it's kind of had a history of. I think this I it's not an approved use. And I would love for the applicant to come back with a conceptual, and I understand the process here, Mr. Rizio, that, you know, there's a lot of steps here, but conceptually, if everything plays out in your favor, um, what is the site going to look like and so that we we could start to think about, you know, what is going to happen here? Is there going to be a wall that goes right through the wetlands and returns back? Are they going to have a wall that follows along the wetlands and then another, you know, thousand yards of fill that come in here to level it out? Um, so what would be happening with that? So a conceptual development plan would be important. Um, borings on both of those lots as well to understand the nature of the material there. And any fill depositive in the town right of way needs to be removed.
Well, all reasonable suggestions, Commissioner Pressby.
Thank you.
Rich, what are your thoughts?
In regards to the boulder, um, did anyone discuss possible crushing of those boulders?
Be a lot of crushing. I mean, there's a lot there, so. And I don't think the neighbors would be too happy with that either.
Crushing operations require a special permit.
I I I'm not I'm not advocating the crushing. I guess I'm, what's the what's the other method of disposition of these rocks?
Bury them or truck them out or use them as a line of demarcation along the wetlands.
So. Okay. I guess I also agree with the massive test borings needed here, um, just because of the nature of the property is I know it's in no way imputing the owner. Obviously, we've agreed that various people have dumped on this property. Um, but for that very reason, we we should, you know, do our due diligence and request test borings all around the site um, just because of the uh, potential for unsuitables. And um, I also agree with the the concern about stability. If we can get that certified, that'll go a long way toward, um, you know, guaranteeing the 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 physical integrity of that wall. Thank you.
Alright, so what's the overall thought? Two borings, three borings for property, four borings?
Uh, I guess, you know, the the amount of borings to be determined by Tatiana, but certainly a minimum of three.
For property, you're thinking?
Well, yes, it's a large property. I'm assuming three by three. I mean, there's been how many trucks coming in and out of there? Again, by no fault of the applicant, I don't intend to impugn them, but over twenty years, you know, you have one truck a year, certainly more than one truck a year has come. There's a reasonable chance that one of those trucks came from somewhere it shouldn't have.
I'll address the elephant in the room. As far as I'm concerned, through the twenty years, we saw a lot of different building materials, a lot of different things that were um, brought onto that property and then either removed later, spread, whatever. So uh, you know, it's something that you know, I'd like to make sure that the there's no contaminants, anything that affects the wetlands, so.
And and this chairman, it's not just the, it's not just the soil. I mean, there were there was a vessel was dumped there once. I mean, there was, you know, a boat sitting there. Who knows?
Vessel and and equipment. And remember, they had the uh, hut there that had the uh, various contaminants and things, oils and all that. It's it's gone through a lot of things through the years, so. Alright, so at this point then, I think we're all agreed. Uh, Greg, can I get a motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm looking at public. I'm looking at public that's this big and I'm just ignoring it. Sorry about that. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak, Mr. Chin? Thank you for jumping on that for me.
If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment at this time, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment at this time, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Three inches high, I made it and have stuff to come by it, so.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it does not appear that we have any members of the public wishing to make a comment.
All right, then at this point, um Greg, can we get a motion to approve application twenty five dash zero nine?
Right. Okay.
Through the chair, I'm sort of really quick. If during hypothetically, if during investigations by this third party structural engineer, if the stormwater system needs to be relocated, is the commission comfortable with this work occurring without applicant having to come back to the commission?
I'd say if if uh something happens that it proves it's uh, you know, integrity isn't there. Yeah, I'd say they'd have to come back to.
Clarify, if the wall needs to be relocated already done, they would have to come back. If only the stormwater system needs to be relocated. Will the commission be comfortable with that work? Cause they will be within the limits of the existing wall?
No, no, I'd say they they should come back.
Thank you.
So good, good catch, uh Tatiana. All right, we'll give Mr. Gregory a moment there and always uh taking notes.
Okay, I um make a motion to approve application twenty five oh nine Amelia Ferry permit approval to legalize existing improvements for retaining.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sernica, we probably should have a motion to close the public hearing on that application. And then we should have a motion to continue the public hearing on the other two applications, which I believe is the commission's intent. So that we could have further feedback from the applicant for the next meeting.
Okay.
Then we should have a motion to approve as we're doing right now.
Okay, David, would you do those motions for me while uh Greg is working on his notes?
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on lot four Amelia Ferry. And uh can motion to continue the public hearing on lots two and three. Amelia Ferry. Who's talking?
I don't know. All of a sudden that that came out of nowhere.
Can I get a second?
Seconded by Bob. All in favor? I don't, okay, everyone suggests that there's six DAs. All right, you may continue, uh Greg.
All right, so the meetings, public meeting is closed. Okay.
This application, yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve application twenty five oh nine Amelia uh ferry um permit approval to legalize existing improvements for retaining wall location. Topographic contour changes and underground infiltration system within a regulated area at four Sycamore Street. Which is a modification of application twenty one oh six. With general conditions one point one to one point one oh. And additional conditions, three point one, where applicant needs to submit all structural design and structural documentation to the engineering department. In a certific- certified with certified um structural engineering approvals on those uh documents um of the relocated stormwater retention basin to those walls. Three point two, three site. Did we say we want site bearings? Is that for this one or we're gonna do a borings?
Yes.
We want to do all three locations. Okay. Three point two, um a minimum of three site borings to be de- uh location to be designated by engineering uh of the fill to determine the nature of the fill and to test for contaminants. Three point three, if the structural documentation and integrity cannot be obtained by a structural engineer, then the applicant needs to return back to the wetlands commission. All these conditions need to be met before issuance of a CO.
Okay, Tatiana and John, have we missed anything?
Did we want to get a planting plan for that?
Okay. So that would be three point three uh planting plan needs to be submitted. It's by the wall, right?
Yeah.
Uh planting plan for for on the around the wall uh needs to be submitted in engineering uh and approved before a CO is issued.
Carmine, you had a suggestion or a comment?
I I have a comment or a question. Did Greg, did you include like Tatiana said, the wall? Integrity is okay. But they question the location of the storm.
Um, no, I will, uh, okay, I will add one more condition. If structural integrity of the wall is met, however, the location of the under underground uh stormwater retention base basin needs to be moved. Applicant needs to return to uh wetlands with those changes.
That would also include if there's a problem with the wall and the wall has to be redone, they would come back to us.
Yes.
So.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Rich.
Um, just a couple of things about the planting and also the fill, um I would suggest a condition that all unsuitable fill or excavated soil is gonna be hauled off site. And this would also include the boulders. It would be hauled off site or deposited on property in a location approved by the town engineer.
And that would be for this specific site, cause we have to address the other two.
Right, so I'll I'll put it just it's uh it was proposed condition number twenty eight from the original list. All unsuitable fill boulders and or excavated soil shall be hauled off site or deposited in a location on property approved by the town engineer and or her agent. The other one has to do with the planting plan. Oh, the cat is scratching me, excuse me, um. All new plants shall survive a viability period as determined by the town engineer and or her agent at a minimum of one year. And all plants uh shall be uh wetland friendly native plantings.
All right. Anything else before we bring this? Okay, I need a second on the uh motion, by the way. Okay, uh Bob, Bob's gonna second it. Go ahead, uh Tatiana.
Um, I I would encourage the commission to add a a condition that the building permit is required for the wall as part of that, maybe an added fencing or railing. And and I know the commission desires three borings. I do believe for number four, maybe a little bit excessive just because the amount of fill is one eighty six cubic yards for that particular lot. Number six and number C and C there in around eight hundred cubic yards. After the commission, it's just it's the the investigation is is really cold for other lots, this one.
So what are you suggesting? So you're suggesting none because again, you don't know what was done previously there because remember a lot of things have been moved around on this property. So if you're happy with not doing any uh borings on this.
It it it's up to the commission. It's just the the amount of fill is uh substantially less than on other lots. If you would like verification, certainly, um just wanted to bring that that the fill is different.
Well, perhaps we could reduce that to two.
But we're also looking at the contamination factor, so.
Well, is it i- isn't it, is it, you're specifically talking about the area of coverage or the amount, the total dumped?
Uh, volume, total dumped.
Okay. But I mean, I I guess I should withdraw that because isn't it the same problem? I mean, is there really a significant cost savings telling them to do one fewer boring?
Um, a- up to the commission again, uh it it just doesn't, i- if it's three per each lot, if that's what you're comfortable with is, that's fine, but it it may be I good to have less borings on that one and more on others. Just a thought.
Up to you, Dave.
You want to do four and the other two and none on this one? Is that the, that's the feeling I'm getting from you, so.
Would the nature of the material that was previously brought in on this site affect the infiltration capacity of that system and its performance? Were there test holes provided for the location where that drainage system is installed?
We have test pits for the stormwater.
In that location and in that material?
In the original location, not in the actually constructed location, but it is in the vicinity.
So would a boring there help determine that or do test holes need to be provided?
Let's have a couple. Test pits done, uh one one would be good in the vicinity of the new stormwater system.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to eliminate the boring and we're gonna do a test pit there.
Yes.
All right, you got that, Greg?
Yep. Through the chair.
Yes, sir, uh Rich, go ahead.
So we'll do the one test bit there and then four on the other properties.
Yes.
But still a total of nine is just better uh better use of resource.
One uh test pit for uh four and then we'll do borings on the other uh properties, so.
Yeah, that'll be done later.
And contaminants, you know, check on contaminants, so.
And then Tatiana, do you think we need a staging plan, failing a staging plan?
It's been constructed already. They, all they need is landscape it.
All right. I'm satisfied.
All right, if are we good? Can we, we'll bring this to a vote? Okay, I'm gonna do a verbal on this. I'm a yes. Carmine?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
David?
I'm voting no on this one.
All right, uh Rich? I'm getting old, Rich. Yes or no?
I'm sorry, yes, I.
Yes, okay, Greg?
Yes.
Okay, and as I said, I'm a uh, as I think I got everybody, so it's five yeses and one nay, if I'm correct, right?
Yes.
Okay. You need a moment there, uh Greg, before we move to the other one?
Uh Chairman, members of commission, and thank you very much for your patience. I really appreciate it. Sorry to have put you through this. We'll see you next month and hopefully can wind this down. But once again, thanks for your, thanks for your patience. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, for the record, we're now going to application.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Carmine.
Since these are three individual applications. Were we going, it may be too late, were we gonna discuss a fine for the the for four?
Or we talked about with the uh, you know, the wall there, but I think uh with six and with uh three twenty one, we'll discuss that, so.
Per diem?
I didn't hear you what?
Per a per Carmine, a per diem fine?
I just said fine. I I just said a fine. I, how it would be determined, we haven't discussed, but whether or not to even discuss a fine for four.
All right.
I think at this point, uh, we've already uh voted it in, so we'll take that concern for the other two properties there, and that can be done on uh next month's meeting, but all right, so for application twenty five uh ten. Tatiana, what do you think we should be looking at for uh that we want to uh have them come back with a uh alternate for um number six, as far as the wall's concerned, what else?
So the alternate may pertain to lot C, but yeah, it's kind of in between those two. So a building permit for the wall is also required. They should apply for P and Z special permit. I think it would be wise for the con- for the commission to clarify the scope of the site monitor and make sure that nothing happens that is not on the approved plans by the commission.
Okay, fortunately, I don't see uh Mr. Kenny, so we can get a hold of him in the morning to see if Phil agree because supposedly he was supposed to oversee erosion. And uh it's gonna be expanded beyond that, so.
Well, I think it's up to the commission to require what the site monitor should provide and whether it's existing or an alternate site monitor. It it's gonna have to be provided. You know, compliance with the horizontal and vertical um approved plans should be monitored weekly. And yes, we'll discuss borings, so just defining the amount of how borings and yes, staking, staking lot corners, that's what the commission wanted.
Do, Mr. Chairman, do you want these borings to be completed on that application prior to next month?
Uh, possible, so we know what we're looking at.
I I think if that's something the applicant can do, Tatiana, is that a feasible thing?
I'm not sure. They they could try. I'm sure they'll try, but I don't know.
I think that would help this commission
Yep.
board with a greater sense of confidence if we could get those those done in the time. So maybe you can interact with the applicant um after this meeting.
So how many borings does this commission desire?
Let's do four each.
Okay.
And that's for the contaminants. And then also if they when they're staking out three um two one, also to the far side, so that we know where that stops and I don't know how far down into the wetlands that property uh goes to, so. Uh, we can get a couple of stakes or markers.
Mr. Chairman, we we did sort of continue the hearing on this, so I I don't know that we should really discuss this too much more. I think the applicant has has sort of left the meeting, but um
Right now, we're just giving them things that we want to have uh for the next meeting, right?
Yes.
All right, are we missing anything for the rest of the commissioners' thoughts that you have?
Planting plan on 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 six.
Okay, that would be proposed, um. Anything else that you can think of, Carmine or Bob or Rich, we're good?
The planting plan has to make sure it it meets the same requirements. It has to be all be um wetland friendly species, um native to Southern New England. And um, you know, usual strict requirements, they do the reviews.
Okay, one of the things that um Tatiana had mentioned on six was a uh P and Z special permit because of the amount of the fill that came in. Um, third party inspection of the wall, is that something you were looking for, uh Tatiana?
That's part of the building permit process that would be required for both number four and number six.
All right, and then uh so we've got the stakes of the corners, uh oh, okay, let's discuss before we close. Monitor. I'm I'm sorry, didn't hear that, what?
Excuse me, Dave, sorry.
Um, Tatiana, do we need test pits for the drainage system on lot six?
I was gonna ask the question, did they install them yet?
Well, it's saint proposed, that's uh encouraging. Yeah, I may, I may ask for one.
Do you want one on on six?
Yep.
Okay, you have that uh written down, Greg?
Those that, but these aren't conditions, this is
Tatiana needs a letter, right? We're looking to have done for the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
It's a mandatory.
It's a mandatory.
Well, those are automatic.
Right.
Yes, in fact, some of these conditions of approval having to do with plantings should be part of section one.
Amelia Ferry has her hand raised.
I'd like to just clarify that the infiltration system on lot C, uh, number six has not been installed, it is proposed.
Yep.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, let's quickly go through on, um, banding the, um, uh, site monitors things, because right now, as I understood it, basically Bill was supposed to be overseeing erosion, well, what we should do is have somebody that, uh, assures that, um, the, um, outline of of the permit is being followed, the conditions. Um, now, because it seemed an awful lot of, uh, soil came into this, uh, you know, uh, onto six, tremendous amount onto, uh, three twenty-one, so. Um, I'd like to have pictures taken, I'd like to also have weekly until this thing is completed. So, do you all agree?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yes, the, uh, site monitor is gonna be a third party.
Yeah, and again, Tatiana, do you think, uh, we approach Bill on this and see if he's willing to take it on, otherwise we'll get a, uh, site monitor. And again, that would be at the cost of the, uh, applicant, so.
So it's up to the commission or the Bill's Kenny's company has been monitoring it thus far, um. If the commission is comfortable with that, um, I'm sure they can accommodate additional, um, monitoring.
I'm not, yeah, I'm I'm clouding what you just said.
I'm saying.
Getting, getting a second, uh, um, monitor in or just?
I'm saying as long as the commission is comfortable with what's occurred thus far, I'm sure Bill Kenny's company can accommodate additional, um, work as part of his monitoring, yeah. Up to you guys.
Is the commission comfortable with that arrangement?
I'm favoring, I'm favoring, I'm favoring a third party.
Usually we have a third party which is paid for by the applicant and approved by this town engineer and or her agent.
Well, Bill Kenny would be a third party. But he's already, you know.
He's on the payroll.
Has an arrangement.
So the the applicant needs to supply, you know, someone else.
Oh, I think if Bill agrees to it, his reputation is out there, and, uh, you know, we've gotten to know him through the years, I think he'll if he knows what's required, he'll do it, if he doesn't, then we'll bring it up and, uh, you know, he'll mosey on down the road, so, alright, it's getting late there, I see people yawning. Um, anything else? Alright, uh, let's discuss, um, very quickly, um, minutes. Greg, do you, do you have a chance for April one and April eighth?
Yes, uh, I'll do the first one, uh, I make a motion to approve minutes of the town of Trumbull Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission meeting held on April first, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, Rich seconded, all in favor? Unanimous, April, uh, eighth?
Yep, I make, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the town of Trumbull Inland Wetlands and Water Course Special Meeting held on April eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Who's gonna second? Okay, seconded by Carmine, all in favor? Abstention, unanimous?
I abstained.
Okay, and so that's five in favor and one abstention.
Just because I was absent from it, man.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, schedule of the field inspections, May twentieth, Tuesday at two o'clock, and, um, I would propose that we walk application twenty-five dash thirteen, we will uh, make the applicant aware of, uh, what we're looking for there. Do you feel that we have to walk twenty-five fourteen? Yes, no, that's the one with the proposed wetlands being changed around, yes, no, what do you think?
That is, that has a signi- uh, significant impact?
Uh, well, no, the first one, that's the one with the conservation.
Well, the one, the one with apple tree, uh, Applegate Hill needs to be walked.
That's the, uh, significant impact, that will walk. And then, uh, twenty-five fourteen is, that's six twenty-two Booth Hill, that's been approved to do the pool. Um, they're just looking to, uh, fill in, uh, five forty of, uh, wetlands, and then, you know, do you think that's necessary? Yes, no, let's see. I'm not getting any feedback, so I'm assuming no, we aren't.
Because they're, they're filling a tremendous amount of, uh, soil, I mean, it's, that's generally not done.
I know, I'd like to walk it, so that's what I'm saying.
I just assumed it was an automatic walk.
Well, that's, alright, well, we're gonna walk it, so.
Up to Carmine.
No, I'd, I'd like to walk it, I just remembered on that one, um, we never did ask about that pipe that seemed to be coming from the house next door, as far as whether or not they were able to find out anything.
Well, when we walk it, we'll ask.
They weren't able to find.
Okay. Alright, as I always do, um, Colleen, anything else to, uh, come before our commission? Am I missing anything?
We're not.
We vote on the second.
We're all good.
Excuse me, do we vote on the motion?
Uh, let's see, we brought, um, no, that's a walk, we're not voting on a walk, it's a walk, so. Alright.
Okay.
Don't confuse me, I get confused very easily at this time.
Okay.
Alright, anything else? Alright, because of late hour, I'm not going to, uh.
One, and does Rich Deacon have any information from P and Z, especially regarding Booth Hill Road and Unity?
Okay, get ready for breakfast, gang, go ahead, quickly, uh, Mr., uh, Deacon.
No problem, just looking at the calendar here, um, May twenty-first will be the P and Z meeting, I'll keep my remarks under twenty minutes off, so there'll be a, um, an application on the agenda to change the definition of a village residence district from what is right now, two hundred feet of unbroken frontage on a state highway, to that and or being within twenty-five hundred feet of exit fifty, which would include the subject property mentioned at the northwest corner of Booth Hill and, um, Unity Road. If approved, that would allow them to move forward with the application as that would, if approved, be, um, part of the overlay zone. Um, they would still have to come before inland wetlands, as there is a significant amount of wetlands on the property. Uh, as based on the past couple of meetings, um, there was um, a robust discussion on various other, uh, zone changes, including high-density housing. And that robust discussion is almost certainly, uh, going to continue at that May meeting. So I am saying as much as I really can, as you know, it's tough to explain, uh, very much of the application without appearing prejudicial. Uh, but certainly, the, um, the public has spoken, um, and commissioners have expressed opinions and, uh, the applicant has valid opinions as well. And those will be determined on May twenty-first. But even if they get approved.
One other thing.
We'll have to come to them.
Alright, one other thing, please, if you're gonna do the walk, let the Colleen know, so I know how many are going, so if I have to do, you know, two groups, alright? So, if there be no objection, I move to adjourn, and I thank you all, and.
Is there a time for that walk?
Yeah, two o'clock. On May twentieth, which is a Tuesday.
On two o'clock?
Yes, sir. Thank you all.